I call this meeting the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order the form of board members as president being swingfully called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Governor's Code, Chapter 551. And now if you'll join me in the pledge to the Americans like anyone else in the city after that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We are excited to celebrate and recognize our students. I want to begin with a special welcome and recognize some folks. That's Haggard, Kerry Pearson. Join Jason Carruthers on the ballot for at-large position. Okay, we're going to begin this evening with a great opportunity to recognize many of our students and our staff for the great things they're doing. We like to celebrate. We do this well. So let me give some, because we practice it a lot. Let me give some headlines for those of you who have not been here before. We're going to do groups. We've got a certificate for you. We'll try to get those out, so be patient with us as we go through all these names and certificates and sorting them out. Stay up here for a picture. Parents, please take pictures. Please come up. They want you to take their picture. But we will also take a photograph officially for our website, and we'll get that posted, so don't get in a hurry about leaving. We'll spend a few minutes on each group. So, let's begin. Kyle, you want to get us started with the UIL Best Robotics State Championship?
Thank you, Mr. Vindinger. I'm really excited tonight to recognize Belton High School's robotics team. They took third place in 5A and 6A high schools competing in the 2006 Best Robotics State Championship, which was held in December in Frisco. BEST stands for Boosting Engineering Science and Technology, and the overarching challenge this year was to create a robot that could simulate a number of different farm tasks. One of the things that's exciting about this tonight is that the team actually left the state championship without knowing that they placed third, and so we really get to be the public recognition of their success. And so in addition to placing third overall, I want to highlight before I introduce the individual team members that they placed first in both the exhibit and interview category and in the category for their marketing presentation, that they took third place in the spirit and sportsmanship category and sixth place for their engineering notebook.
That's awesome. Turn them up.
And the team members who were competing at the state championship were Zachary Albertini...
Okay, as your name's called, come on up. Mr. Cowan has certificates for you.
Christopher Benares. Ricardo Chichang. Jackie Corona.
There you go.
Angel Luna. Jaxery Alvera. Carson Raquel. Lindsay Rang. Lizzie Rankin. Cheyenne Reed. Cheyenne Riojas. Hunter Schnappel. Kinsey Singh. Justice Smith. Harley Speck. Gaia Three. Gaia Three, I'm going to apologize that I can't pronounce your last name. Larry Nguyen. Steven Wissinger. And Siu Wu. And the team was coached by Tony Green.
All right, before you get them all sorted out. Make sure the Harvest King is in the picture. All right, for those of you that don't know, Tony Green is our robotics wizard. Wizard sponsor, okay. Okay, y'all are going to have to scrunch up a little bit, and some of you could step up here on the stage if you want. Block us, we don't need to be in the picture. There you go. All right, Mike, Jeff, get in that picture with them. Join in. All right, make sure the Harvest King is showing. And I have no idea where we are. Y'all feel free to come on up and take pictures. We're proud of them. Tony, you're supposed to be in this. Tony, get in this picture. You're part of this team, right? All right, let's recognize you. I'm proud of y'all. Way to represent. Good job. That was quite a, a lot of strategy to make that successful. Good job, guys. Okay. Oh, did we miss one? We did. Aw, man. Okay, it may be in the, we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next group we want to recognize is our Skills USA State Qualifiers. This is a huge group, also.
It has been a large group for the past few years, but this far exceeds the group of students that we've been recognizing. We had 49 students who competed in the Regional Skills USA Contest and qualified to advance to the state competition in Corpus Christi next month, so it's just incredibly exciting. I want to start by introducing you to our state qualifiers in photography. There are Macy Lillibridge and Katherine Gist.
We do want sponsors, faculty sponsors to come up with your students and stay up here for a photo op.
In television production.
Stay up here.
We have Serena Castor and Braden Smith as a team advancing to state. In digital cinema production, we have Noah Varville and Phoenix Phillips. We have a team advancing in culinary quiz bowl. There are Armando Flores, Cheyenne Mog, Cheyenne Eason, Lily Barnard, Victor Cano, Timothy In teamwork, we have two teams advancing to the state competition.
Of course we do.
The first team, where they will defend our state titles. The first team is Chloe Bush, Andres Zapata, Joseph Herman, and Alan Harlow. Second team is Bailey Eichenlof, David Herman, Shane Bagley, and Lyu Penny.
Y'all can back up here.
The chapter display team of Rihanna Eubanks, Reagan Chapman, and Daniel Hamm is also advancing to state. Both Nick Garcia and Elijah Butler are advancing in construction tool identification. Our forensic science team of Brandon Grimm, Grace Heath, and Alexandra Jordan are advancing.
Come on forensic team.
Our state qualifying chapter business procedures team also includes Grace Heath along with Michaela Parker, Jordan Ross, Haley Peace, Jeffrey Trowell, and Gabriel Alvereda Pareja.
We're going to get them all up here. Okay, y'all need to back up and come join.
They're going to be joined in Corpus Christi by our community service team.
Oh, you're...
And that includes Alexandra Lachlan, Bailey Stevens, and Kyla Dermody.
Which Dermody?
Then we have a number of projects that received ribbons and are advancing to the state contest. We have automotive projects from Tyler Easley and Benjamin Pintico, Antonia Sanchez, and Michael Kuhn and Jonathan Ginsler advancing. And woodworking projects from Austin Waldo, Elijah Butler, Jonathan Salinas, Matthew Douglas, and Nick Garcia advancing as well.
All right, y'all are going to have to scrunch in somehow and make a, because this is a huge difference. And while they're getting together, let me repeat the point here. And you need to be in the picture. Yes, behind you. Did we miss? Okay. William Glazer. He flies first. Also.
We also have Mary Elise advancing with the forensic science team, and William Glazer advancing in the CNC event. And Tyler Justice in plumbing as well.
There you go. All right, so, come on up. All right, I just want to repeat, these are just advancing to state. We're going to bring home a bunch of state championships, right? Everybody, bring it home. All right, how are we doing? We are really proud of the work that our students are doing at Skills USA, making a difference and making a name for Belton. People know where we are, don't they? Great job, guys. Okay, we're looking forward to recognizing you again as state champions, so bring some bling back. And then national. We'll advance to nationals, that'll be great. Okay, the next group is our HOZA state qualifier.
This is definitely the season for career and technical education contests, and we're really excited that Odie Aiden is going to be representing Belton ISD in the dental science event at the HOZA Future Health Professionals State Conference in Corpus Christi at the end of March, beginning of April.
Who has her certificate? Y'all got that? Are we good? Yep.
Okay.
Okay, next one then is FCC LA State Qualifiers.
Likewise, we had a great showing at the Regional FCC LA Contest, and 12 students are advancing to the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Conference next month. Brittany Green will be competing in recycle redesign. Ashley Ficker and Deja Gonzalez in the Senior Division of Interior Design. Luke Varela and Alex Hunt in interpersonal communication. Savannah Foster and Sean Lush in the Senior Division of Fashion Design. Brandy Harris and Kristen Todd in the Senior Division of the Chapter Service Project Portfolio. And Alexis Ariel and Yasenia Guzman in the Junior Division of the Chapter Service Display, Chapter Service Display. And then we also want to celebrate Cheyenne Reed, who was elected to serve as the Vice President of Records for Region 3 of FCC LA.
Okay, wait, hang, hold that thought. We also got a grant?
Yes.
What's that?
We won $750 towards our state fees for our national program in action.
Wow.
Because we did the teen safe driving activity in October.
Excelling every, okay, y'all scrunch together. You're going to have to act like, be friendlier. Wonderful. Another great group of students representing us and making a name all over the state. Proud of y'all. Now, go bring us back some state championships, okay?
We want to go to national.
And go to a national, of course we do. Win state, advance to national. Okay, next up then, we're going to recognize swimming state medalists times two.
So, Noah Henry was turning in commanding performances all season in the pool, but at the UIL State Swimming and Diving Championships, he brought home two medals, a silver for second place in the 100-yard backstroke and a bronze, third place in the 100-yard butterfly.
Okay, Coach Henry's in the back, dad, being dad tonight. But I want to just add one thing. Didn't bring the bling, but we got some serious bling, but here's a significant thing that most people may have missed. All by himself, he placed Belton High School Swim Team as 21st in the state. All by himself. Silver medal, bronze medal. Will be our first swimmer to go to the Olympics, right? Noah's an extraordinary talent, and it's fun to watch him swim, and we're excited to see those medals coming in and records being set, so keep it going. Good deal. All right, next, what's next? All area and all-state band, shift to fine arts.
So statewide, there are more than 68,000 students that set out on the addition process to make the all-state band, and that field gets winnowed tremendously along the way. We're really excited that we had 19 students who made the all-area band this year, and we want to start by recognizing them, and then we'll recognize our two students who were also selected to perform in the all-state band earlier this month. Our all-area band members are Selica Castro, Ryan Christian. Jackson Craven. Alex Deaton. Cameron Dehart. Hector Flores. Kristen Gebel. Sarah Hoffman. Riley Jones. Mark Morris. Arthur Model. Reagan Pilgrim. Ray Ramirez. Ashley Ray.
These guys know how to stage for a picture.
Logan Stone. Rebecca Thomas. Shelby Tolliver. And Trent Aloa. And I want to highlight our two senior horn players who were selected for all-state band. Mark and Reagan, out of those 68,000 students who began the process, were two who went all the way to be a part of the all-state band, performing together earlier this month.
Come on, y'all are band members, you know how to spread sense. Our band director, hey, I don't know who else here, y'all come up here, join your students. We're proud of y'all. We have a wonderful tradition of excellence in fine arts, and you're carrying that tradition on, we're proud of you. There you go. By the way, while we're, pause a moment, we're not recognizing officially tonight because we didn't have it early enough, but on Friday, our Belton High School orchestras and North Belton Middle School orchestras got sweepstakes at UIL. Congratulations to them. More fine arts excellence. All right, how are we doing? Got it? Good job, guys. Well done. All right, it's notable that we've recognized students from a variety of events, from CTE kinds of coursework, from fine arts, from academics, from athletics, fine arts all around, and that's a great thing. There you go, get those all-staters. Great job, we're proud of y'all. That's a big deal. Really big deal. Okay, now we'd like to recognize the Rotary Educator of the Quarter for Belton Rotary Club.
Thank you. Gives me great pride to honor several folks this evening, and so first up, our Educator of the Quarter for Belton is Dana Morrow. And Dana's being recognized for her outstanding service to Belton. She is a third grade teacher at Southwest Elementary. She's in her 12th year in education, all of which are in Belton. Ms. Morrow challenges all students to excel by having high expectations and teaching her students to set their own goals.
Stacy, get in that picture. Sorry, don't leave, don't leave now. I'm sorry, I interrupted. Calvin, go ahead and...
Okay, she has a strong focus on academic vocabulary, which results in high levels of dialogue in her classroom. She demonstrates patience when multiple opportunities are needed, and she never misses an opportunity to recognize her students. Stacy Cox, principal at Southwest Elementary, stated, "Ms. Morrow is the true definition of a lifelong learner, as she is always looking for ways to take students to the next level. She makes frequent positive phone calls and attends her students' extracurricular events. She's a pleasure to work with due to her dependability, excitement for learning, and her can-do attitude."
We are very thankful for the Belton Rotary Club. Have you been to lunch or are you going to lunch? Haven't been yet, you'll get to join Leo and tomorrow. And Phil? All right, good deal. That'll be a good lunch. Okay. Now, how about the Temple Rotary Club Educator of the Month? We have two of them.
So, our Educator of the Month for the month of January, we would like to recognize Angela Kressman. Angela teaches kindergarten at Lakewood Elementary. She's in her 23rd year in education and her eighth year with the district. Ms. Kressman is able to meet the needs of all of her students. If a student has severe health, behavioral, or academic needs, she will go above and beyond to ensure the student is successful. She builds strong relationships with families by meeting each child wherever they are. Judy Schiller, principal at Lakewood, states, "Ms. Kressman is a positive member of the Lakewood family. She's ready to take on any challenge and provides a positive collaborative approach when working with coworkers, students, and families. It gives me great pleasure for Ms. Kressman to be considered for this honor." Congratulations.
I understand you've already gotten to have lunch with the Temple Rotary Club and Dr. Ken Cannon as a special guest. Thank you. Proud of you. Okay, and we also have another one.
And for the month of February, the Temple Rotary Club would like to honor Laura Houston. And Laura is a kindergarten teacher as well, and she is at Tarver Elementary, and she's in her 12th year in education and her third year with the district. Ms. Houston is a Belton graduate and has returned home to ensure her students have a rich kindergarten experience. She serves as team leader and collaborates with her colleagues through planning on a daily basis. Oftentimes, late into the evening, she stays to prepare for a successful tomorrow. And Michelle Tisch, principal at Tarver, was inspired to nominate Laura as a result of an email that she received from a former student, honoring her for how much their student had grown academically and how Laura has motivated and created excitement in her student. Ms. Tisch states, "Laura is a wonderful teacher with a heart for kids. She makes kindergarten a special time for students and their parents."
Again, thank you to these teachers for representing the heart of Belton, and we're so appreciative of the Rotary Clubs recognizing and honoring them with the special luncheon and recognition, that's a special thing. I want to mention also while we're doing this to the board and remind you that Calvin's been going out and taking the nominations for the Big Red Heart Awards, and one of the great joys has been to walk in with him on occasion to campuses or departments and see and read a letter to somebody just for making a difference. And Big Red Heart has been a wonderful way to recognize their employees. Some students write those parents, grandparents, fellow employees. Really been a neat opportunity for us to recognize our employees. So Calvin, appreciate you doing that and coordinating that. Been a really a neat thing for our district and to see the atmosphere around those awards. Okay, next up then is our Big Red Community Partner.
So tonight, we recognized more than 60 CTE students heading to different events, different state contests. It's a testament to our students, it's a testament to our teachers that they qualified for state, but also it says a lot about our community because it's the partnerships with businesses in the community and other organizations that really make our students' success popular, or possible, rather. So tonight, we're recognizing Nolan Creek Relity and David Sutherland as this month's Big Red Community Partner. Unfortunately, David had a family emergency and isn't able to be with us tonight, but Morgan Conlin is interning with David, and it speaks to the opportunities and the doors that he's opened up for our students, that she's able to accept it on his behalf tonight.
That's cool, because that actually is what it's all about, right?
Absolutely.
All right, good job. Thank you, thank you for being here. Okay, I think that's all of our scheduled, but I did want to share one other thing. We, the school district, was represented this last week by Helping Hands Ministry of Belton as the Community Partner of the Year for 2016. And this is a really, Susan and I were able to go to that luncheon and accept on behalf of our students and our staff that worked so hard in their partnership with the school district. Thank you all for working. What a great service Helping Hands provides to our community and to our students, but it's a partnership. And I think Rucker emphasized that. The partnership that we have working together on behalf of our students is a remarkable thing and something to be very proud of. And I don't want to get too far past the Bell County Youth Fair without just saying, wow, what a great showing we had. So many of our students recognized they did great things in so many different areas, so wonderful event. Did we get everything? Okay. 30 minutes worth of recognition, a good use of time? Yes, it is. Okay, this time, next item on our agenda is public comments. I didn't see anybody who had signed up, but is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Seeing no takers, we'll move to the consent agenda. Any board members have any items they want pulled forward discussion? We have a lengthy consent agenda. We have a lengthy consent agenda tonight, so I'll identify those items as they're scrolled on the screen. We have the minutes from the January 11th, 2017 Special Board Meeting, the January 23rd, 2017 Regular Board Meeting, the February 6th, 2017 Special Board Meeting. We have the unaudited financial report for the month ending January 31st, 2017. And then we have several budget amendments, although most of them are reclassifications, so not changes. First one is the TSI Testing Materials Amendment, Fund 199, Function 31. This is to increase $950 expenditure offset by fees. We have the Theater of Fine Arts Reclassification, Fund 199, Function 36 to 11, to reclassify $11,500. Test Hound Reclassification, Fund 199, Function 11 to 31, to reclassify $13,000. We have the Speaker PA System Admin, which you can actually hear us tonight. Fund 199, Functions 95 and 23 to 53, to reclassify $5,000. We have the LBMS Safety Reclassification, Fund 199, Function 23 to 52, to reclassify $125. Maybe the lowest reclassification we've ever done. We have the First Robotics Reclassification, Fund 199, Functions 11 and 23 to 36, to reclassify $36,000. We have the Dyslexia Teacher Training Reclassification, Fund 199, Function 21 to 11, to reclassify $900. And then the CTE Professional Development Reclassification, Fund 199, Function 11 to 13, reclassify $30,000. We have gifts, grants, and requests of less than $1,000. This is for report only, but wanted board to be aware of that, and we appreciate those donations. We have two items for expenditure over $50,000. These are budgeted items, but because they're over $50,000, they do require board action. The first one is for the Lake Belton Middle School Student Technology Devices, the upgrade replacement cycle. Ordered to Apple, a member of the DIR Purchasing Cooperative, for 1,000 iPads and Connection, a member of the NIPA TCPN contract, for 1,000 order boxes. Total cost, $392,000, with funding that comes from budgeted funds through the Instructional Materials or IMA funds. The second one is the Belton New Tech High School at Wasco Student Technology Devices. This is each year we do this. This is again through Apple, a member of the DIR Purchasing Cooperative, for a total of $27,282.40 for 140 MacBook Pros. Again, IMA and District Technology Funds will be used for those purchases. We have supply equipment and service bids. The first one is request for proposal for building and ground supplies and equipment supplemental two, RFP 1611-905151, to approve the vendor list. Contract is effective March 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2018, and has the option to renew for one additional year. Secondly, the request for proposal for miscellaneous contracted services and repairs supplemental one, RFP 1611-905150, again, to approve the vendor list. Contract effective March 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2018, with the option to renew for two additional years, one year at a time. We have the election judges and alternates for the May 6, 2017 election and trustee and bond elections. We're appreciative of those folks willing to serve in that capacity. We have the lease agreement with Central Texas 4C, Inc., for the Belton Early Head Start Center. Chanel's here, thank you for being here, we appreciate your partnership with us and working with us on that project. We have a resolution expressing intent to finance expenditures to be incurred, and I want to just again point out, this is not authorizing any expenditures, it's just authorizing to be reimbursed from bond proceeds if we do, when we do authorize any expenses. And then we have the ranking of proposals in connection with RCSP 1611-905148 for the Belton High School Roofing Project, Project B Summer 2017, approving the expenditure and authorizing superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract.
John Cannon.
John Cannon is here. Hi, John, thank you for coming. They've worked with us on all of our projects going in the past. Good to see that these bids came in as we would hope they would, Laura. So we're, proposals to approve the bid award for Belton High School Roofing Project B to Empire Roofing Companies, Inc., as presented, and approve the expenditure, amend the budget for total costs of the project, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract for the project on behalf of the district. Had really good experience with Empire on previous project and look forward to their work again. We also have a change order number three for the Automotive Technology Building and Construction Technology Outdoor Shop Project. This is to approve the change order to extend the work schedule for the Automotive Technology Building with a completion date of May 15th, 2017. That's been delayed because of manufacturing of the steel, but it's going up, and it's exciting to see that structure going up. We have a memorandum of agreement with the City of Temple for the Prairie View Road Expansion Project. We've been talking about this for some time and working with the city. We appreciate their work with us and coordination with us on that project. This is to approve the memorandum of agreement with the City of Temple and the general warranty deed of 2.02 acres, more or less, to the City of Temple for the Prairie View Road Expansion Project, and authorize Randy Pittinger, Board President, to execute the general warranty deed as presented on behalf of the Board of Trustees. We're essentially giving two acres, a little over two acres, so that they can redirect that road, connect it over, and help with our future growth improvement in that area. Significant project for us and a great partnership with the City of Temple. Next is the Temple Independent School District Regional Day School Program for the DIF, Shared Services Arrangement Agreement. This is an annual agreement that we have. And then new course request for 2017-18. We have previously done this, but we had two added, and these are exciting because it's to approve the peer assistance for students with disabilities one and two, beginning with the 2017-18 school year, to continue that Partners PE program for those students. And then finally, the bus lease purchase, to approve the lease purchase of two regular 77-passenger buses, one 84-passenger bus and two 54-passenger special needs buses, for the total purchase price of $516,066. Administration will bring the financial documents for the lease purchase to a future board meeting for your approval. It's what we do each year in our, following our plan to replace buses so that we don't have any on regular routes over 15 years old. And that is a budgeted item also as we go. That is the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve? I have a motion for Mr. Calvin. Second, Mr. Cruthers, all in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passes unanimously, thank you very much. I'm going to take a break. And have the superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report. I have three items for you this evening, first being Public Schools Week activities. This week has been designated as Public Schools Week by the Texas School Public Relations Association, TISPR, as we call it. While we've designated next week as our official celebration week in Belton ISD and scheduled most activities for next week, some activities will occur in the district this week. And so I wanted to point out some things to you. First are Public Schools Week receptions. This is a replacement of our luncheon that we've done in the past. It is organized by, at the district level and hosted this year by two of our middle schools. We're holding those this week on Wednesday evening at North Belton Middle School and next week on Thursday evening at South Belton Middle School. Both of those events are at 5:30 PM. We sent out this invitation out to our key communicator mailing list, and we do have special performances by our students planned and displays, and we will be giving out our awards, as we've given at our luncheon in the past, to parents, community members, and businesses who have contributed to the success of the district over the past year. So we're excited about those receptions and hope to see all of you there. You also have a full list of activities, which include a number of open house events, book fairs, carnivals, luncheons, talent shows, walkathons, a whole range of activities next week on our campuses. And just would like to say, we're really proud of our schools, and I'm excited about the things that our campuses are doing next week to engage our community in celebrating Texas Public Schools Week.
Really is a wonderful opportunity to invite our community into our schools who may not normally be there, other than parents who can come and see what's happening. Great opportunity to show off what our students are able to do.
We have a lot to share, so we're excited about it.
Great things are happening in public schools in Belton, Texas.
Great things are happening, yes, they are. Three weeks ago, you called a May 6 bond election to fund four projects, the new elementary school, a second comprehensive high school, a music classroom and gymnasium addition at Lakewood Elementary, and the upgrades to the auditorium next door on Wall Street. And since, I just wanted to give you a little update, since that time, I've been able to give several community presentations and wanted to share some of the questions that I've been receiving from community members and parents, and then you may share some with me as well. But probably the most common question that I've had from parents is, what does this mean for my student? For current middle and high school students, the answer is not much. For current elementary students, however, the answer is that they could be among the first students to attend a new high school. Our current fifth and sixth graders will be in high school in the fall of 2020, when the new school is planned to open with grades nine and 10. And since we would repurpose BHS 9 to once again serve as a middle school when a new high school opens, younger elementary school students could also see the middle school that they attend to change. So that's possibility for younger students with the repurposing of the 9. So that's one question.
Means they won't be as at crowded middle schools as there are those who go before them, right?
Right, we are expected to exceed our capacity in our middle schools by the time we repurpose the 9, and so that would lower that overall student body down to meet the needs of the facility, or for the facility to meet the needs of the kids. Many people are also interested in what a second comprehensive high school would mean for extracurricular activities. You probably had that question about, and especially about UIL classifications. Because we've discussed opening the new high school with ninth and 10th graders in 2020, we are anticipating that the new high school would likely be a 4A high school when it opens, while Belton High School would likely remain a 6A high school in the fall of 2020. So that's a pretty popular question. And then finally, there have been some questions...
It's important to remember that New Tech will remain with its 500-plus students as part of Belton High School.
New Tech will be a part of the Belton High School.
Those students will continue to participate in UIL, fine arts, athletics, and other events like we saw today.
Yes.
Yeah, as they have been doing.
As they have been doing, and that is important to the success of Belton New Tech High School. Our students there want to participate in extracurricular activities, and so that would remain the same. There have also been some questions about which facilities might be shared between Belton High School and the new comprehensive high school. And as a reminder, we do plan to share Tiger Field. We don't intend to add a second Friday Night Lights stadium, so we'll be sharing Tiger Field, we'll be sharing the Swim Center, and we'll be sharing the new auto tech facility. And so, so far, those are the most popular questions that I've had, and I just ask you if you heard some others.
I just mentioned the other program I've heard asked, ROTC is not likely, I mean, it's very hard to get new ROTC programs, and so that program will be based at Belton High School.
That's correct. You have to make application and only so many.
They have some unique facilities also, their shooting range and things.
Only so many are designated, and we would, we do not have a designation for the new comprehensive high school. And maybe difficult to get one.
I'm wondering what are the questions I might be hearing? One of the questions I hear, you kind of touched on it, but what happens to Belton High School is kind of the big question. It remains a large high school is part of the answer, because that's our population, our numbers are clearly there. And those juniors and seniors, the first year, will be there, and then the seniors. So for two years, they will be, but it will, with our continued growth, we're going to continue to see large numbers. And we don't know exactly where UIL cutoffs will be, two, four, six years down the road, but you can kind of estimate, we're going to be big.
We are going to be big, and as our demographer predicts, we will have nearly 4,500 students by the fall of 2025 at the high school level, and 5,000 students by the fall of '29. And so we will have a significant number of high school students.
It's pretty safe to assume we're going to have two 6A schools at some point in the very foreseeable future, based on that.
We will, we'll start at 4A at the new high school, and over time, you'll see that those numbers increase as we approach the 5,000 mark in Belton ISD, for secondary students.
What are the questions?
One of the questions I had, excuse me, Jason, was about the mascot, whether or not the new high school will remain Tiger, or would it be something else?
Yeah, I've heard that question too, and we, what I, my answer to that question is that this is a very long process. And we, first, the first step, of course, is asking our voters to approve the bond program, and then we have a lot of decisions to make along the way, including attendance boundaries, staffing, colors, mascot, and so we are taking it one step at a time and working our way through the process. You know, we visited multiple school districts that have gone through this in the past, and we've been able to identify all of the things that have to happen by the time we get to the opening of a new high school. There are a lot of steps along the way, and so we're not, we haven't made that decision yet, and my answer in community meetings is that that is a decision that will be made in the future. Good question.
That's an amazing comment. That's the first question, because that's the first question I've been asked many times. No one's concerned with the extra 1,700, 1,800 students that are going to be here time it opens, but they're really concerned. What are we going to call the new school?
That's another one of those decision points, right? The name of the school, yeah.
But anyway, can you clarify, I mean, the first varsity season will actually be in 2021 for the high school, is that correct? When they would play, because your first two years, you only have freshmen and sophomore
Yeah, that's a great question. In the fall of 2020, we intend to have a varsity team at those, at the, at the new school in a lower classification, based on the attendance boundaries and the numbers of students that are there. And so you will see your ninth and 10th graders have the opportunity to play varsity sports at a lower classification.
And then realignment is in the odd year of 2021.
The realignment comes, oh gosh, you might have to help me when that year, the year of the realignment would be. Initially, we were thinking the fall of 2019, because realignment is in '18, so I think...
Well, we were originally going to open in 2021, remember? We backed it up a year trying to deal with overcrowding and moved the, so we gained a year. So when we were going to open it in 2021, then we'd have that outlaw schedule for a year or two, but 20 is the even year.
Oh, yes.
But then puts you into a classification.
So in the even years.
But remember, it'll be two years, it'll be two, but they won't open, actually, that's not right. Because you got to, you won't have a number until you start it, and so what number do you turn in? How does that work? That's an interesting dynamic, how that works. We're going to have to work all that, those kind of details out.
Those are things we have to work out. And the thinking with opening in the fall was that you would run an outlaw schedule prior to a realignment. With opening in the, in the, in even numbered year, we'd have to work that, through that. I'll work on that one, Jason, that's tricky.
It is a tricky, kind of going back to your original comment, people want to, how does this affect my child, and where they're going to be and what they would be, what grade level? Are they going to be part of a huge graduating class or a smaller graduating class, or, and a lot of questions about that. What attendance zones, obviously with the new elementary school, we're changing elementary attendance zones. With a new middle school, fourth middle school will change middle school attendance zone, so there is, but as we've talked about, we're going to have less disruption with the site we chose, but still, there's some changes coming, so.
There are, and...
But you don't want to do things like that too far ahead. We're talking about two and three years from now, and so if you do it without current data, it's not going to be valid, and so you have to wait till you're closer to that time to do that.
Sure, for some of those decisions. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for our ninth and 10th graders who are entering to play up and have that varsity experience early. Maybe a bit of a challenge, but still an opportunity at the same time, yeah.
What else, other questions?
I have another one, if I can finish, go. Number one, I guess, second besides the mascot, question. Number two, question. Seems like we're rushing it one... Seems like we're rushing it. Why are you moving it up and voting so quick for it?
Great question. We spent a great deal of time talking with you all about that. The, originally, we had talked about a November election, and the decision to move that to a May election was driven primarily on being able to reduce the inflationary costs of the bond program. In terms of timing, if you delayed it, you would add another 5% of cost to, for inflation. In addition, we, we have the ability to apply for some state funding if we sell those bonds by August 31st. And so we're able to maximize some state funding by moving that up a few months.
Jennifer also told us, from a bond sale point, that's likely to be better interest rates also. And so you put all three of those things together.
That's correct.
It was going to be a much, I mean, that started selling us of, we can lower the cost of this significantly when you add all those things together.
I knew that answer. I was just wanting to get it out.
That's a good one. We've been through that multiple times, but that's...
Savings by moving it up.
Yeah, significant savings, right.
From the May election to the November.
Big driver.
I just wanted to repeat.
No, and I'm glad you did, Jason, because one of the things we've been talking about is we need the FAQs, frequently asked questions, and Kyle's, I think, worked on. By the way, this would be a good point to say. Kyle's reworked the Roadmap 2025 website. It's bisd.net/roadmap2025. Is that right?
Right now, it's bisd2025, but we can add roadmap.
Okay, B I S D 2025. Click on the logo, and it takes you there. Anyway, he's reworked that. It's got all of the current information, most recent first, and so it's easy to access the information, and, and we'll be able to funnel people and send that to them. But one of the things we also, he's mentioned is, we put some FAQs. You know, so as we hear those kind of questions, those are the kind of things, as you're right, we've been through this over and over and over, but we need to make sure that we're able to give those answers to the most frequently asked questions. That's good. Thank you, Jason. Okay, Mike, you have it.
Well, what I've been asked the most, sorry. What I've been asked the most is why we selected the Poison Oak site for the new elementary school. Other than that, I hadn't been asked a lot.
And you will recall, our engineers and architects evaluated the five potential elementary sites that we have available in Belton ISD, looking at multiple factors, like accessibility to the site, cost to build on the site. I can't remember that, that whole matrix that we looked at, and Poison Oak was rated as the best site at this time, with all of the sites being viable sites for an elementary school.
Susan, as, but remember, the, it came down to two issues. Cost and least disruptive, lowest cost and least disruptive to current attendance boundaries.
That's correct.
And so those two combined to that being the best available site at the time. I've been asked the same question, and that, those really, I mean, those multiple meetings we had about sites, it kept coming back, the cost.
I knew the answer.
Right. But, but we need to put that on the list. That's right. That's right. Good, good, good. Jeff, did you have, okay?
Good, thank you.
Anything else? Leo, you getting anything different?
The only thing I get is the same thing we've got all along, is why.
Why, right.
And I think once people are educated as to how fast we are actually growing, then it kind of answers itself. People kind of get stuck in their own little bubble. You know, I have a kid in elementary school. Why are we building another high school? Do you realize how many students are coming in? But that's, that's the question I get day, almost daily, is why? It, it just needs to get out there more.
The, the sheer number.
Correct.
3,200 high school students. Everybody has shock of that.
3,200 today.
Yeah, today.
But 5,000 by 2029, that's a number I like, it's a nice round number, but...
Well, even the today number is shocking to most people.
4,500 by 2025, and overall, over 14,000 students by 2025 in Belton ISD.
And 350 kids growing a year. That's what kind of shocks everyone, is we're growing by 350 kids a year on average.
Correct.
And so it's not, I mean, that adds up very quickly.
Eddie growth, yes. Okay, great.
Well, let me, I'll just, on that note, say, as you're hearing questions, if we can funnel those to Susan so she can add them to the FAQ list, and, and anything that new that comes up, one of our tasks is to get factual information out as much as possible. And so that means responding to the questions we're getting. That's really the question I'm asking people, is what are you hearing? What questions are you hearing? We'll keep funneling those questions.
The rest, you won't remember. You're not getting asked plenty, many questions yet. Just go to HEB on Saturday or Sunday.
That's a big...
Or Monday evening after the meeting, you'll get them too. That's, that's a good point. HEB's a great place for lots of questions. I get them. They're true.
Okay, finally, just a brief legislative update. Two things I wanted to tell you about. The first is a visit that I made on February the 15th to the Capitol. I joined Region 12 staff and some of our area superintendents, who went up for a visit. We had the opportunity to interact with some of our legislators and ask some questions. Representative Hugh Shine was one of those legislators we visited with on, on the 15th. Three main issues that we discussed primarily. One was the A through F accountability system. And there are still a lot of questions about what might be changed about that system, or if there would be any bills to modify the A through F system or even take it away completely. And what we heard from our legislators is that there's really not much will to do anything significant with the A through F system. However, there might be some small tweaks in terms of the criteria and some of the things that, that we've noted that don't seem to make sense in the methodology. And so we spent quite a bit of time talking about A through F. We also talked about a significant bill for all of us, and that was Senate Bill 789. And that bill would limit the districts that participate in TRS active care to those with 1,000 or fewer employees. And that cuts out about 82 school districts who are currently in the program, including Belton ISD. And then it also impacts our, all of the school districts that are participating. It eliminates the traditional co-pay plan option and leaves only a high deductible option for employees who are on, who are on the active care program. And so we're watching that bill. We are very concerned about that bill. Since we joined the TRS active care program for our employees, we've been pretty pleased with the, the options that our employees have. There are multiple, multiple options for health care with some different providers. And so it gave our employees some flexibility to choose the plan that works best for them, their family. Families, especially with existing health conditions, and they were able to look at those maxes and make some decisions that, that really was beneficial to them. And so if we were forced out of the TRS active care program, we would, we'd have to go out to bid and, and do what we had done previously.
Done that.
And our rates could go up, likely go up, so.
We've been there, and we don't want to go back to there.
We have.
I'm curious, what's the, what's the push for that? Who's pushing that and why?
I believe that bill is by Huffman, Senator Huffman, and the...
Just another...
It's just cost.
Taking a shot at public ed, or?
No, it's cost. It, it was never intended that the bill would be funded by the legislature. The state does kick in money per employee for health insurance, and it, it's not, it's just expensive. Health insurance is expensive.
It's part of the whole health insurance issue.
It's part of the problem, so.
So they want to kick out the largest and say, you're on your own. Good luck with that.
They do, and I'm not sure how that's helpful, but that is the plan.
Dr. Kinkanen.
Uh huh.
Was it that they're going to kick them out? Or my understanding was that they were going to give a one-time option for large schools to be able to opt out of the TRS?
There were...
That was one of the amendments that I'd seen on there, and I know why they're doing that, because there are some large school systems that want out. That can do better.
Yeah, there are, there's a one-time option for some districts, but the bill also says that some, that districts with over 1,000 employees would be pushed out.
Okay.
So, so there was some, you know, we had some debate about what would make that bill better.
You know, that, that kind of makes sense, because one of the things, when you, we had to struggle with. Once you say you're in, you can't get out. I mean, you're, it's for life, allegedly, until they change the rules. Until they kick you out. So it makes some sense to say, we'll give an option whether, and let people decide.
Well, and what they have to do, just like when they built it, and the reason they did that, is when TRS built that and they did the opt-in, can't opt-out, is because they didn't want adverse selection, because they knew what would happen is every sixth school district would jump in. And then as your school district grew or you became healthy, you would say, well, we're fine now, we'll leave. Well, then you're going to, TRS did not want to become
Right.
the choice of last resort, but now they kind of have, and they've really financially, they don't know what to do with the plan they have. So I, I knew the option out. They were trying to get, and, and large, there are some large school districts that have pushed for this, because some of the really large ones that got in are now saying, we think we can do much better on our own than we can in the TRS system.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big, there's a big debate about this bill.
Great.
And so we're, we're definitely watching that. And I know Todd has some plans to visit with our DEWIC committee about that bill as well.
There is also a House bill, the same one that was in last session, to help fast-growth school districts with, with INS rates, basically, to help. With fast-growth school districts, there are 80 fast-growth, 75 fast-growth districts with 80% of the growth in the state of Texas. And the state hasn't helped with fully funding EDA, existing debt allowance.
I think that's 7, I believe that's 1788.
Yeah, that sounds right.
We're studying that one to see what's impacted.
And so that's Representative Thompson, who sponsored it last session, has brought it back up. I've talked with you about that also, and, and obviously, an issue that's very relevant to our taxpayers.
And then finally, while we were at the Capitol, we, we did visit with all the legislators about vouchers and education savings accounts. And all of the superintendents expressed concern over any bill that would provide vouchers or entitlements to parents. And what we heard generally was that the House, House members were generally not in favor of vouchers. However, there's a different opinion on the Senate side of things. So all in all, it was a good visit, and I enjoyed listening to my fellow superintendents and thinking about these issues with them. And then the second thing I wanted to tell you about in regards to legislative update is something that Representative Hugh Shine has been doing weekly. He's been hosting weekly conference calls with all of the superintendents in his district, and we've been very appreciative of that. It's been an opportunity for us to interact with him and to ask him about any bills that are on our radar, and for him to ask us questions and to, to give us some information. And so we've been very appreciative of that. It's been very efficient. They're very organized teleconference calls with Representative Shine and his staff, and it's been very good. So I appreciate him for that, and, and that's been helpful in keeping us updated for this legislative session. So that's all I have this evening.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is to review superintendent's contract. And let me just mention to everyone on behalf of the board, we spent the last month in, in previous meetings evaluating superintendent's performance. But what's notable about that is it's not just an evaluation of one person, because superintendent's goals represent the district's goals. They represent all of our administrative team, certainly. It represents the board. It represents our entire school district as a whole. And so when we're evaluating the superintendent and performance goals and what we've accomplished over the past year, it really is an evaluation of all of us. And what I would share with you is, as a board, we're not only very confident in the leadership of our school district, but very thankful for the leaders we have, starting with Dr. Dean Cannon, but, but for our administrative team and the work that's being done to be good stewards, to take care of our students, to provide opportunities for them to excel in, in a variety of areas. And, and while we're not ever where we want to be, perfect, whatever that means, we're moving in the right direction, and we're very pleased with the direction of our district. And, and one of the things that we evaluate are processes or plans. And so the processes we have in place are working. They're working well. And, and that, that's working well. We, we approve plans and set in motion things, but administratively, you get the work done. And so I want to just say again, on behalf of the board, a thank you to you all, administrators, for your role in helping this school district excel and have wonderful results and opportunities for our students. Our community that we represent, our community is pleased with, with the product they are getting with their schools. And so we're very thankful for your participation in that. Part of that, obviously, we're very pleased and very thankful. Susan, your willingness to continue to serve in this capacity and, you know, being a superintendent, it's a difficult job. You have to be a CEO of a, of a large organization with 1,700 employees and very large annual operating budget, and an educational leader, and a public figure. And, and you never get off duty. That's a 24/7 kind of a, of a role. And so it's a unique job, and it is a job. But it's much more, obviously, to you than a job. It's a passion and a, and a, something you do very well. We're very thankful. So on behalf of the board, thank you again for that. What we do as part of our evaluation is, and we do, should, just to clarify, we do calendar year goals, 2016, and then we have up on the screen the 2017 goals. We also have school year goals that are part of our district plans and all. But we really kind of start our planning process, and it, it has multiple start points and staggers points in, in our planning. We spend a lot of energy and a lot of time doing strategic planning, and part of that comes with the goals. So we reviewed the 2016 goals that we established last year and where we are with them, and then going forward, what are our goals for this calendar year, which will include the rest of this school year and the first part of next school year. And as part of that, certainly, our, our conclusion is that we're moving in the right direction, and we have the right leader in that place. And so three steps that we need to take tonight. One is annually, we extend the superintendent's contract to keep it as a three-year contract. So that would extend the contract from 2017 through 2020. We want to keep Dr. Dean Cannon tied up as long as possible. Secondly, to approve the 2017 goals, which again are on the screen and in the packet, that will begin to, to be developed out as we go forward in our district and campus plans. And then third, to approve the evaluation instrument. We use the TASB recommended plan, evaluation instrument. I think that's the right word. TASB recommended evaluation instrument. And so those items would recommend, we don't do salary at this point in time. We do that during our budgeting later in the spring for next year. But we do want to extend that since my recommendation that we would extend contract, approve the goals for 2017, and adopt the TASB recommended evaluation instrument for next year. Is there a motion to approve? Have a motion from Mr. Cowan, second, Mr. Norwood. Anybody have any comments, want to add anything?
You know, I would say real quick, I guess, we're not a typical school district. We remain the school district of choice locally, but when you think about what all happens at a typical school district, we have to do so much more than that. And Dr. Kinkanen and her administrative team, it's amazing what you accomplish every year. I mean, our goals include a lot of things that a typical school district doesn't. We're one of the 75 that Randy mentioned that are, that are fast-growth. And that adds a whole different dynamic to what Dr. Kinkanen and the administrative team have to attack on a regular basis. So it's impressive, year in and year out, and great work. And that's it.
Okay. On favor of the motion, raise hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you for serving in this capacity and continue to. And thank you all for continuing to work towards that. We've, we don't apologize for having lofty goals, because it's about our kids. And so we will continue to do that, and, and these goals are ambitious, and we expect great things to come in the next year. And so we will continue to do our part to contribute to that and try not to get in the way and be a hindrance on those things. Okay, well, let's, let's do some more hiring. Are you going to get a starter? Todd going to do this, or?
Todd and Mike are leading.
Or Mike's going to get here. We've got coaches in suits.
We, we have an opportunity to, to make two recommendations tonight, and it basically, kind of a follow-up to what we did a month or so ago when Coach Skidmore and I were hired. So we are going to bring up, I'll bring our newest addition up first, is Coach Brian Cope, if he'll come on up, and I'll ask his wife, Allison, to come up too, as well. Coach Cope has been in education for 11 years. He has a business administration degree and an accounting master's from Trinity University, and worked in the private sector for, for a couple of years before he got into coaching and realized that working with kids was his, was his calling. before he got into coaching and realized that working with kids was his, was his calling. The last six years, he's been the offensive coordinator at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. He's also been the recruiting coordinator and has handled a lot of the same duties and roles that he will handle here as our athletic academic coordinator. And so, we're excited to have him here as an assistant athletic director. He's actually going to get to start on Wednesday.
All right.
And we're excited about that. And so it's going to be a really, really good situation for our kids. We did our homework on Brian and we couldn't find anything but great things that he's done in that regard. Even has read novels to help some of the guys with their projects and things like that and be up on what they're studying and things. So, the expectations are high on Brian. He's going to do a very, very good job for us.
That's great. Well, Brian and Allison, we want to welcome you to Belton. We're excited to see what you bring and help us get better. You've got tough shoes to follow, people to follow, however you want to say that, people who have committed to our kids in great ways. And Mike, just for Mike to say those things about you means he trusts you to follow the legacy that he's established. And those expectations are very high. And so, thank you. And we're excited about what you bring to that. We're glad to have you in Big Red Country, so.
We're glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Great, okay. Go ahead.
I'm also, we're going to have a reassignment as well. With Coach Skidmore moving into the head football position, we, he has some duties as assistant athletic director. And in our restructuring, we're going to do a promotion of Coach Bryce Munson as our other assistant athletic director. So, I'd ask Coach Munson and his wife Charlene to come up at this time as well.
Right.
Coach Munson is currently on staff. He currently serves as our defensive coordinator and has been in our role as a, as a strength and conditioning coordinator. He is in his twenty-eighth year of education. He's been, of that time, he's been a head coach for ten years. He's been, he's been a coordinator on the offensive side, a coordinator on the defensive side. And two things that I absolutely know about Bryce is that the kids absolutely love him and nobody will outwork him. And I know those two things for sure. And there's no doubt that he's going to be a big asset to our kids, to our athletic program, and to our school district in this new capacity as we move forward.
And we don't have to say welcome because we already did that with you, but wow, y'all have really bought into the whole Belton Tiger thing in a big way. And that's obvious. The kids do love you. And that's obvious. And that, that's a big deal. And that matters. So, thank you for the way you jumped in.
And he brings a lot of experience to, of things for younger coaches and things to the job.
It's because he loves the kids.
Yep.
We do. We love the kids. Absolutely. Appreciate it very much.
You do. And for those of you that don't know, Charlene's at Pertle Elementary School, making a difference and followed Mary Bales. And those are big shoes to fill. And she's doing a great job. And I got to be there when she got a Big Red Heart Award. That tells you what a good job she's doing. And so these are folks who are, have bought into making Belton a special place for our kids. So, thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate your willingness to step into a little more responsibility. And Coach Skidmore, you got, you anything you want to add for these guys? Building your team up here.
Yeah, they're both first-class individuals. We'd be happy to have them both on our staff. They do a great job. Like Coach Morris said, Coach, if not anybody said a bad thing about him, nothing but rave reviews. You know, I met Coach Munson at Brownwood, I coached at Brownwood. He was just coming off being a head coach. He would do the little things even first-year coaches wouldn't do. We're going to outwork that man.
That's sweet.
That's awesome. Thank you. We appreciate, appreciate you all coming. Okay, I think, I think we're going to get a picture of you and then we'll get the rest of our personnel report.
And while you're doing that, I'll mention, I think Allison, you taught for us previously. Allison's coming back to Belton and hopefully back to Belton ISD. We're going to work on that. But Allison has previously taught at Belton High School as a math teacher for us.
And we're glad you're back. Back where you belong, right? Good to have you here. Excited to have you here. Todd, go ahead and finish our report.
In addition to those two, we have one other recommendation tonight, and that's for Stacy Brown, for PE teacher at Chisholm Trail Elementary. And that's a, that's a position that would be effective now. And we have thirteen openings for next school year, seventeen eighteen.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Have a motion from Ms. Jordan, and second from Mr. Camden. How's that? Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate your work on, on that behalf. And gentlemen, ladies, welcome. We're so glad to have you part of our, our team and look forward to what you do for our kids. Make us better. That's what we need for you to do. Keep making us better. And go Tigers. That's it. That's what it's all about. Okay, next item, consider adoption of the Belton ISD District of Innovation Plan. Dr. Dean Cannon?
I'm excited about the coaches. I forgot what I was doing. Well, we have talked about District of Innovation for, since September. So, I think I've shared everything that we have done so far. We've met all the statutory requirements. Our DEWIC has approved our plan. And we've held the public hearings. And so tonight, we're asking you to approve the plan that you've seen previously that includes three components. First component being the teacher certification exception to provide us some flexibility in hiring law enforcement, health science, culinary arts, construction trades, and automotive technology teachers in the future. The second exception that we're asking for is the minimum attendance for class credit or final grade, which allows us to provide some innovative options for students, some online dual-credit options where students can take dual-credit courses independently. And also, for our students to be able to participate in online blended learning courses that would be, would allow them to have some time in the classroom and some time to work independently at home or in a designated location in the school. And we're really excited about the opportunity to do that. And then finally, the District of Innovation Plan includes an exception to begin the school year before the Fourth Monday in August. And that allows us to develop a calendar, as we will share in a few minutes this evening, but allows us to develop a calendar that is based on our local values and what we think's important for, for our community. And so, we're, tonight we're presenting the plan for your approval.
Seems like we've been talking about this for months.
We have. It's a very long process, September to February.
But this is the final step. We don't, all we have to do is notify the state. We don't need any further approval.
That's correct.
This ends this and we are officially a District of Innovation.
That's correct. We set the limit of our plan for five years. We will mail a letter to the commissioner tomorrow regarding your decision this evening. And there is no approval required by the Commissioner of Education. So, your approval of the plan puts the plan into effect.
Sue, you worked on that original committee that worked together? Anything to add?
I do not. I can't think of a thing other than
Okay.
Talked about it and
We talked about it and talked about it.
And talked about it. And I think that we did a lot of good work. There was lots of community participation. There was participation from all levels, so, all walks. So, I think we did a good job.
Yeah, I feel really, I feel really good about it. We, we had teachers volunteer to participate. And our high, our highest level of engagement was from our secondary teachers who were really excited about doing something innovative with instruction to provide some flexibility for our high school students. And, and that was a surprise. That was a really neat thing that came out of the plan. And so we, that, that innovative word that's in there, we truly were innovative in our planning process to do something.
It's going to be fascinating to see how that plays out over the next school year.
Yeah.
It's going to be very interesting.
So, I'm proud that, I had hesitated on the District of Innovation because when I had studied it, I didn't see the innovation in the, asking for some of these exceptions. But I feel very good that we do have a plan that has some innovation in it for our students.
Very appropriate for Belton ISD to be a District of Innovation because of the many innovative things that are happening in this district. But this is a specific designation for the state of Texas that fits. Is there a motion you'd like to make?
I would. I would absolutely ask that we approve the District of Innovation Plan.
Okay. Have a motion, and it's from Ms. Jordan, and second from Mr. Crowder. There's any other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. We're going to pass that unanimously. Again, I think we've passed multiple times to get to this point. So, we are officially a District of Innovation. Go get them. Again, another great opportunity for our kids. New opportunities. Okay, so the next one is the school calendar, which is segue.
That's, that's correct. Now that you have proved, have approved the District of Innovation Plan, you can use that designation to approve a calendar which begins school prior to the Fourth Monday in August. And so, our DEWIC committee has worked on the calendar for many months as well. And tonight, we're proposing the 2017-2018 school calendar, which has school starting on August the 21st. And you can see that it, we, we have holidays for Labor Day. We have professional development days for Columbus Day and Veterans Day so that our students can be off. We have Martin Luther King and President's Day as staff development days. We have March 12th through the 16th as spring break, which is in, which is the same week as our local school districts, universities, and colleges, as we've all collaborated on that. And then finally, you can see that school ends there just after Memorial Day, with graduation continuing on Thursday, May the 31st.
Well, let me just say again, I appreciate at least having the option considered by our staff to end before Memorial Day.
Yes, we had two options, one
We weren't quite there as a district. And I guess when you ask for input and ask them what they want, you somewhat obligated to give them what they asked for. So, we did. And while I wish we were ending before Memorial Day personally, I understand the
But it is an improvement to not hear
It is an
The graduation is in June.
It's a little bit earlier.
Yep. Yes. It is improved. Those two days after Memorial Day concerned me. But that's the challenge. And the wanting to get as more, many days prior to the AP testing. We heard, we have heard that repeatedly.
Yeah, they're really, your, your options for developing a calendar are really limited in
Yeah, I understand.
If you take the holidays that you've traditionally taken and, and you meet
And those are important. Breaks are clearly important and need to be built in. I mean, I don't think anybody thinks otherwise. But, but it is what it is. So, so appreciate the work on that. Certainly want to thank DEWIC. I really do like our system where we send it out to the campuses and let folks vote and, and
We did that.
We take that feedback. That's important, so. Motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Norwood, second Mr. Cowan. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? Passed unanimously. You've got a calendar. All right. Go plan your vacations accordingly. Set your ski trips and summer trips and all according to the plan. And I don't mean that, I'm not, don't mean to joke about that. Seriously, I know people are waiting for us to
They are.
Set calendars so they can know, when do I need to be back? When do I, when will be off? Those are important to folks and for planning. So, we do want to get that out as soon as possible to everybody. Okay, Kyle, we, one of the things we asked for over the last few months is as we began to get ready to call for the bond election, there are some laws that are very specific in regard to elections and what we can and can't do. And, and so we asked Kyle to start walking us through those to make sure that we're going to do everything properly and legally. We would just say, before you start, we, seven board members, Amanda, are the only ones who have actually voted in favor of this bond so far. But we have done that. And therefore, once we've done that, now a new set of guidelines are out there for us. So, Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Pittenger. Tonight, I'm going to focus on the restrictions that are within the Texas election code. But I also want to draw your attention to two pieces of board policy that are relevant to the conversation as well. That's Board Policy BBBB Legal, which lays out elections ethics, and Board Policy BBBF Local, which lays out board member ethics more broadly and more generally. The section of the Texas election code that I want to focus on has two pieces to it. The first is a restriction on an officer or an employee of a political subdivision, in this case, our school district, that those individuals may not knowingly spend or authorize the spending of public funds for political advertising. And the second is a requirement that anything that those, those individuals, those entities spend funds on be accurate and truthful. So, when you think about your role as an officer, as a board member, there are really, I think, three key questions to think through. And I want to draw a distinction that relates to the first question between your role as a board member, as an officer, as a representative of the district, acting on the district's behalf in your role as an individual, where you may have a private gathering in your home and it brought people together. In this case, we're talking about the former, when you're acting on behalf of the district, and not the situations in which you may just simply be a private individual. So, the first key question to ask when you're acting on behalf of the district is, are you spending public funds? And as a state, Texas has an incredibly broad idea of what spending public funds means. And practically, for you, it means if you're in a school district facility, if you're using school district resources, if you're using school district supplies, if you're relying on an employee of the district to do something, all of those things are going to constitute spending public funds. So, it's everything from you direct someone to produce something with school district resources, to as simple as you use the school district's email system to send an email. So, the idea of spending public funds is pretty expansive in this case. So, the next question is, is what you're doing, is what you're communicating advocating for or against the bond? That's the key that's going to make that thing a political advertisement. That's going to take it beyond simply sharing information that might inform the public and reach into that prohibited category of spending public funds in favor or against a ballot measure. And then the third piece, which is good advice in life in general, is, is what you're saying true. And so that's the question to ask in the context of, okay, you've decided you're not spending public funds. You've decided that what you're communicating isn't advocating. Either of those, right, gets you to the next step. But if you are spending public funds, even if you're not advocating, you want to ask, is it accurate? Is it true? So, those are the pieces. And what they come together to do practically, I think, is, is they give you some things to avoid. And then, and we'll have some examples of those. And then they give you some things that you can do. The first is, is quite simply, in your role as an officer of the district, don't advocate for or against the bond. So, don't say things like, please vote for it, please vote against it. It's pretty straightforward. But because the Ethics Commission and their rulings is so expansive, and because the law's idea of what could constitute advocacy is so expansive, it's probably also best to avoid using comparative terms and descriptions that are intended to create a positive impression. So, if you're comparing the bond package as preferable to everything else, you're probably entering a territory that's advocacy beyond simply informing. So, when you think about informing, you think about laying out, here are the facts as they are. When you think about advocacy, you think about, it may involve a foundation of the facts, but presenting them in contrast to and as preferable to another alternative. And what you can do, focus is very simply, share factual information. So, a big piece of that is making sure, as we've talked about, that the community understands Belton ISD's growth, that we grew by over three thousand students in the last decade. We're projected to grow by about thirty-six hundred in the next ten years. As a result, our middle schools and elementary schools are projected to be at or near capacity by 2019, and our high schools by 2021. You can share information about registering to vote and when, how to vote. So, that might include that early voting begins on April 24th, that the last day to register to vote is April 6th, that Election Day is May 6th. And you can certainly encourage people to vote. You can thank them for voting in the past. You can thank them for being the people who vote. You can ask them to vote on May 6th, but can't take the extra step of advocating and asking them to vote in a particular them to vote in a particular way on May 6th. So I know that, that you want to have a conversation about this, but that's really kind of the, the broad overview. Certainly like to answer any questions that you have, Mr. Pittenger.
Well, let me, let me just shift your attention to a handout you have at the table. This is the Tasby Campaign Speech During Elections Guidelines. Tasby courses gives a lot of guidance to us. This certainly covers much of the same information that Kyle covered, but starting on page three has some specific questions, Q and A specific to board members. It has some employee things that certainly we would share with everybody else. But the thing that I would point at, having been through several of these before, the key point is, there's a difference between being in an active role and working on behalf of the district and being a public citizen. And we do not give our rights to free speech or right to being a citizen. And so we don't use our BISD email to send advocacy, but we can certainly use our telephone to call, to email, to advocate as personal, private citizens. And we do not give up our right to that just because we're elected board members. I would remind you, as a board member, we're really only board members when we're together as a board, acting. And so as long, certainly don't use district email kinds of things or specifics. But there's some good Q and A in here. Yes, we can advocate. Yes, we can do all that as private citizens. Yes, we can do whatever we, however we choose to advocate for or against, we could do as private citizens, as long as we're not doing that on behalf of the district with district resources. So that's the, that's just the rule. So I always get a little bit nervous when I say, oh, you can't do anything, and so board members are afraid to, can get afraid to do anything for fear of doing something wrong. We do not give up our rights to be citizens. And we are, we'll continue to be in that role. And, and again, Tasby's given us some really good information here. I'm not going to read through it. You can read through the, the handout. We'll, this is printed off for you. We'll get this emailed. Connie, can you email this out to everybody and provide that too? So, does anybody have any specific questions for Kyle or related to this, perhaps for some of us who have been through a, a bond election before? Question? Clear? Y'all good? If you have any questions, Kyle's a good, a great resource for, for this. We, we want to be legal. We want to make sure we do all this information right. The district will be continuing to develop. What are the questions we're being asked so we can give the information out, you know, and answer the questions? But in terms of advocacy, as individuals, you can make your own choices as an individual, what you choose to do. Okay? Anything else?
Back to me.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate that opportunity. Okay. Issues or concerns for future administrative reports? Jeff, you got anything? Mike?
No, sir.
Sue?
Yes, sir.
Leo?
I know we've been getting individual invitations or calendar dates of the presentations. Can we get one master list that has all of it in one, all the things that we have?
We're still adding those. I can, when we get. Yeah. We'll, we'll work on adding those.
That's going to be a change. I mean, you can.
It's evolving.
Just keep a date on it of most current.
The next two weeks.
Yeah.
Here's the one schedule, and then two weeks later.
Glad you mentioned that. And I mentioned, to mention that earlier, as you're going out and getting information sessions, there's, there's a couple of issues. One, we need to keep identifying groups of people that is in or can go out and, and share information and give. Our goal has to be to give as much information as possible to our community, to engage our community, continue to engage. We use the media and, and all those avenues, but we need to also have opportunities to meet with whatever civic groups or, or whatever. The other opportunity though is, we need to go to some of those and be accessible to our public. That's a great opportunity for feedback and all. So thank you for giving us those.
You're welcome. Would you prefer them in a different format over the Outlook invite? Jason?
You want a piece of paper like this Public Schools Week thing? Is that what you're asking for?
Or just an email with a list?
Or want just an email with the list versus, sometimes you miss them on the calendar dates when they're all separate.
I have to.
You get 30 at a time.
There can be a lot of calendar events. That's a great thing. I appreciate trying, trying to help organize my life. Okay. Anything else, Jason? Okay. Just mention a, a couple of things I want to remind, put another reminder, might put that slide back up on the screen if you've got it. Public School Week receptions on, the first one on Wednesday at North Belton Middle School, and then March 9th at South Belton Middle School. Great opportunity first to be there and, and welcome people into our schools. One other thing, and, and you have, board members have given this to you at your, at your table, and I think there's some in the back for those of you that are there. The Belton Education Richmond Foundation is sponsoring their annual golf tournament at Wildfire, and want to encourage everyone, it's on March 27th, want to encourage everyone to participate in some way. This is a great opportunity to support Beef, who supports our students with scholarships and teacher grants and paraprofessional continuing education grants. So I want to encourage you to be part of that, either as a player or sponsor. And so you have a form to do so. And anybody else who'd like to participate in that, we have that opportunity. Put a team together and get a ringer and go win something. Our next regular meeting is that night, actually, Monday, March 27th. Because of spring break, we've pushed our regular meeting to the Fourth Monday, so we don't come right back after spring break with that meeting. So that's what's on our calendar. And unless I've missed anything? Connie, cover everything? It is 6:37, and this meeting is adjourned. Oh, no, it's not adjourned. Don't, let me not adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry. We're going to closed session. I almost see, I almost, I almost messed it up. At this time, the board will go into closed session to, for deliberations about, about real property. I don't expect us to be very long, but I don't expect us to take any significant action coming back. So if you're not here when we come back to adjourn, have a lovely evening. Thanks for joining us.